Time for your monthly meeting, the Knox County Council.
All right. Council Vice President Helen Brand, will you give the indication, please?
Almighty God, as we come before you today to discuss important matters, we ask for your guidance and wisdom. You are the source of all knowledge and understanding, therefore we seek your direction in our decision-making process. We trust that you will guide us on this path and lead us to reach a consensus that reflects your will. May our words and actions be guided by your love and grace, in your name we pray, amen.
Mary, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the Constitution and our God and the Constitution.
All right. Easy boy.
Mr. Call the roll in please. Present. Present.
Present.
Present.
And Wrightmeyer.
Present.
Present.
Chatton did contact me, advised me he had a previous meeting and he did not be able to attend this morning or this evening, so. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda from last month?
Yep.
Yes.
Entertained a motion to approve.
Second.
So moved. Jay Yocum and Mary Chrismore, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Six zero. Make a change on the agenda, if you could, a couple, like to move Sheriff Vanlonne up front. He has another appointment, Vanlonne needs to be out here very shortly. And I'd like to add, Mr. James Reese to the agenda as well, to help us with some juvenile situations. Any appointments we know of? Tony Mayhan.
With the area plan commission.
Has asked to be on the area plan commission, it was tabled last month because we did not know, he's still one of the positions, so now he does. So entertain a motion to approve Tony Mayhan, the area plan.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Yocum, seconded by Councilman Meyer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Then with the housing authority. Excuse me. Mr. Shelton has presented a candidate to us, Teresa Gilli, to appear on the housing authority. Make a motion to approve. Motion by Councilman Yocum.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Meyer. Vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Six zero. Okay, Sheriff, can you all come on up?
Red is hot.
No. Red is hot.
Additional appropriations, you want to start there first?
Yes.
You want to go, okay. We sold a van, or excuse me, a truck to the Vincent School Police Department. And the reason we have two of these, the account, the eleven thirty, the federal inmate fund, that's where we get the money for our vehicles. So when we sold this vehicle, we wanted that money brought back to the eleven thirty it was. But now we have to move it from the eleven thirty into a line item for vehicles. So that's what, and the two of them here, one is for the vehicle itself, and the other one will go into an equipment line item. That was for the lights, siren, everything else we left on the truck, so we charged them for that too. So we have two of these line items, one for twenty-five thousand for the truck, and the other for eighty-six ninety-five for the equipment.
What year is that?
It was a twenty, I think a twenty, what it was, twenty twenty. Yeah, they, they hold their value real well, trucks do.
Have any further questions? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Wrightmeyer and Councilman Chris, Councilperson, excuse me, Chrismore. Will take it as the, entertain the motion and passes six zero.
Uh huh.
Yes. Yes.
We had the additional request for the live nine-one-one.
Yep.
Which, if I recall correctly, we did a digital agreement last meeting in January to approve this.
Yes. Correct.
So we just need to entertain, entertain a motion for a, for a vote.
So.
I'll second.
Okay, Councilman Yocum and Council Vice President Helen Brand, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Thank you very much.
With the, with the motion of the twenty-five thousand dollars, are we including number three?
Which one?
Well, number two. Number three, including both, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Make sure. Next on the agenda is new business. Sheriff has already been taken care of. Don't see Troy Hinkle.
Nope.
Heard anything on that? Okay, pass through that. And Mrs. Luce. Hello. Hello.
Um, I just wanted to do a quick introduction, Carolyn Fisher started two weeks ago as my deputy director, so she'll be helping me.
Very good. Good luck.
Welcome.
Yeah. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Probably your hair will turn white, you'll get the shakes, you'll catch up with your son.
So did you come from another nine-one-one or?
I came, I was actually here at Central, I took a job back home in Carlisle as a deputy clerk, so I was there for a couple of years and I'll come back.
Transition back.
Well, welcome back.
Full steam.
Yep.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Carter, you have one more thing, we might as well take care of it while you're up here anyway.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
Um, well, I saw, I saw in there that interlocal agreement, but, um.
Mr. Porter will be taking care of that.
Okay, I was like, um, so do I need to stand up here or?
No, while you're up here, you had another request in here, we believe, didn't you?
I do.
What you did?
Yeah.
You're staying up here.
I think so, yep.
Mr. Porter. Thank you. No need to rush on.
Number eight there is, that Carter, number eight. Part-time employee and office supply.
Yeah, part-time employee.
On the list.
Mm-hmm. Watch, watch your request.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Um, so I actually just need, um, to transfer the sixteen thousand into part-time. So that can be transferred to office supplies because I have to reimburse the state nine-one-one board. Whenever I did the twenty twenty-four annual reports, they came back and said that two of the items that we had bought last year needed to be reimbursed because those were non, they could not come out of the state nine-one-one board funds. So we were just trying to find money to be able to pay that back.
But you found what you needed, correct?
Yeah, we found, yeah, we had money left over, so we just needed to encumber that into the part-time and then transfer it over to office supplies so we could pay that back.
Any questions?
So you're not asking for this to come out of this year's budget, you're actually wanting to encumber last year's?
Correct. Yeah.
And you have that left over from a part-time position?
Yes. Yes. Yep.
Okay, any more questions, any further questions? Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Council Yocum and Council Vice President Helen Brand, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Six zero.
All right, thank you guys.
Interlocal, Mr. Porter?
Uh, yeah, this is an interlocal cooperation agreement between Knox County and the city of Vincent's. In short, both the city of Vincent's and Knox County operated emergency communications. The city and the county thought it was best to streamline that process and have the county take control over all emergency communications. Due to the influx of the city's calls coming into E nine-one-one, the city employees, which were two, are going to be absorbed into E nine-one-one and increase its employees by two. So the city's going to pay for two staff members as part of the E nine-one-one. So there'll be one communication, which would be E nine-one-one, and two additional employees. Overall, streamline communication, no additional cost to the county, and the city's still paying its portion, but it's saving money because it doesn't have to worry about equipment.
Right. Do you need to make a motion on that or?
We need to make a motion.
Yes. Interlocals have to be approved by commissioners and council.
Entertain a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between Vincent City and Knox County.
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Yocum.
Aye.
Mary, Mary Chrismore will say. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain from this one, presence, I'm involved in the.
Your dispatch.
Dispatch, so.
Right.
Motion passes five zero with Councilman Helen Brand abstaining from the vote. Okay, next. James, you want to step up real quick?
All right, I do believe I've been asked to come here this evening to kind of give an idea of what things are happening in probation and with the juvenile piece along with the adult part. A lot of times I feel that council commissioners don't actually have an idea of what we really do, I know some of yous do. I've been here a lot, and the volume amount of people that actually cross through our threshold and come into probation department. A few years back, I got a system that when people are on probation come into the department, they check into a kiosk and then that shoots their information out to each of our probation officers so they know somebody's here to come check in. So just this year alone, so far, checked into that kiosk has been nine hundred people. That's only the people coming in to see a probation officer, that's not including people just coming from the courts. As Judge Gilmore's sitting here, sends them over to us. People just random questions and complaints, people making payments. And it is people coming just to ask about people that's on probation, we have a lot of that, and as in the other part of the world, we call them telltales. So we are extremely busy with, with that portion of the, the adult side. We currently have roughly about a thousand people on probation right now. That's not including all the cases that are pending for probation violations, sentencings. One of our probation officers, Corey Severs, he does nothing but pre-sentence writings for the courts prior to their sentence, which is mandatory for an F five and above, the F six is a. What, just a possible credit. Yes. Which, yes, so with that piece of it with Corey's, you know, I do believe last year, I've tried to find it on my phone, I cannot find it. But I do believe it's a little over two hundred pre-sentences for last year, twenty-two. So that's kind of just a real, out here looking, you know, overview of adults. The juveniles, with three girls, still dealing with the detention centerpiece. I think Councilman Helen Brands stated last month that we have somebody possibly who would be available, which would be a good thing. Right now, we have one person in detention at Vigo County. We had four that we just moved out of detention and moved them to residential, so they weren't able to actually come home, so they moved on. But out of those four, then they were scattered throughout the state, which that also means with the girls, each month, they have to travel to each of those facilities. And they have to have a face-to-face visit with them at that facility per state statute. And then we have like five or six others that were just in detention and they would bounce them out to either just to their parents and/or electronic monitoring. So.
So you can do that electronic monitoring on, right?
Yes, yes we can. So we started doing that once we were having difficulty finding, um, detention. Guess it started, what, last August, September-ish? Yeah, so after their initial hearing, if, if they, if the other county was needing that bed, because of, a lot of the counties have contracts, and if, if they need a bed, then they pick up the phone, if we don't have a contract, they'll hate it. I mean, we have a juvenile, need to come pick them up. So that is, is generally what does happen.
Anybody have more questions for Mr. Reese? Just for information, I asked James to appear for us, prepare a monthly report for us because those who are not familiar with the juvenile situation, it's a different animal than you normally deal with on a daily basis. And all of us need to understand how the process works so we can all work together a little bit better. We have a great system going now, but maybe it's a little bit more.
Yes. It's a pretty big deal. Uh, I do believe there's one, three hundred, and how many rules, John, do you remember what we had in there, was there like three hundred and six rules that the state of Indiana has in a booklet? The new booklet for the state of Indiana come out a couple of years ago, is my understanding. So with housing, if, if like the county had a facility of their own type of thing, each of those rules and regulations have to be met by the state.
Maybe it would be more of the house, six, eight, juvenile, the workforce would be, it would be great, but.
It's, it's a tough one to answer. If it, if this new facility comes in, that'd be great. I mean, that's a.
Obviously, whatever you say.
I mean. It'd be difficult, could it be done, yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Holdens.
Good evening, counsel, I'm just coming here tonight, I had an employee that's terminated about six weeks ago, and I'm just asking to replace him, he's been paid out everything. Actually have interviewed multiple people, we've had over thirty applications at the highway department. We haven't made an offer yet, but I was waiting on this meeting tonight to be able to replace that employee's for District Three, truck driver labor, which is a north district. So just asking if I can replace him.
Entertain a motion to replace this, John?
Now I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Yocum and seconded by Councilman Meyer, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel.
Good to go.
He's got three items on there.
Matt? Hang on, Matt.
Salt bridge.
Yeah. Right.
Salt bridge, bridge.
Additional appropriations that you guys do have is for reimbursements for federal aid projects. I guess there's probably definitely one for bridge inspection. Probably something in there for Bridge Three Eighty-Two. I think those are the only two that we would have in there. Now, this is actually reimbursement money going back to us that's already been paid.
Right.
Yes, then, then last month, last month with the additional appropriation for the salt material that we burnt very quick last, last month in that. Right at the beginning of the year when I didn't, when you don't want it, so. We are, we do have more salt delivered, we are ready, like we were ready for this, so we wouldn't have been able to be very much ready for anything in the rest of the year if that wasn't for that.
They did a good job on that, too.
We, uh, used everything we had, including manpower, we had guys over a hundred hours that week.
They did a good job.
We couldn't, we couldn't buy hundreds of thousands of dollars of salt or millions of dollars of equipment, but we could put manpower to it, and that's what we did, we tried to work it to death, so.
Motion by Councilman Wrightmeyer for all three, for all three of them, seconded, on second, on three. Seconded by Councilman Helen Brand, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, or six zero.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Judge.
There's move for a loop. Okay, so I am, I have tons of information, and so I am obviously asking for some money, but I'm here to answer any questions that anyone has. The request is to change my part-time position to a full-time court reporter position. The change, I think it was about three years ago, was made obviously before my time to eliminate a full-time position, increase the pay of the remaining full-time positions, and then allow each court to have a part-time court reporter. Had I been in the office at that time, I would not have supported that. The part-time position is not useful to me, and maybe it is to other courts, it's not to me, I have currently fifteen possible people who are maybes that I have received applications from, and not one single person has any legal experience. Probably a quarter of these people have some office experience, still not in this type of field. So a couple of them are possibilities, but I would be starting from scratch to train them, and I was really, really hoping to not have to do that. You know, we, we need more help. Are there any questions before I launch into any long explanation of why I really need this position?
The case load, case load has definitely not gone down, right?
Uh, no. So we, the judges all had to participate in a, they call it a weighted case load study. And obviously, people higher up in the government like to be able to attach numbers to things because it's something that makes it easy for us to quantify what's happening. I did not find their numbers to be particularly useful because they are attaching a weight to the number of cases based on what they perceive the work to be. So, for example, a CC cause number, which is collections, so if you're a business person and you have someone who does not pay their bills and you have to take them to court, you can file a collections case against them, you can file a small claims case, CCs are what are filed in my court. Those are given eighteen minutes worth of time. So for every CC cause number that gets filed in my court, the court, the powers that be assume that it's taken me eighteen minutes to work on that case. I have done, I wouldn't call myself Taipei because I'm not really organized enough for that, but I'm a control freak. And so I still do quite a bit of my own orders because I am still getting comfortable with how I want things done. And so I do judgments for CCs, so if you had been sued and you don't respond to the complaint, let's say you don't pay your credit card bill, you get sued, you don't respond to the complaint, that's a judgment, and in my opinion, that is something that the judge needs to look at, it's not something for staff to do. You are asking for a judgment to be entered against someone for their money. And so I do those orders, and I have kept track, and it takes fifty clicks of the mouse to process a judgment of default. Five zero. You are literally sitting there for every single one. I sometimes will have, I currently have sixty, David probably knows better than I do, I think I have sixty-seven motions for default sitting in my queue waiting for me to process at this point in time. So they think it only takes eighteen minutes for the whole case for it filed, that's just for processing a motion for default. So the numbers they gave us are really unrealistic, but one thing that I was able to do using what they gave me is add up the number of cases. In the last quarter of two thousand twenty-four, four hundred seventy-one new filings were filed in Circuit Court, three hundred and three were filed in Superior Court One. So the weight that is attributed to the cases in Superior Court One is higher according to the state of Indiana because Superior Court One gets the juvenile cases, they get the Chen's cases, they get the ones that, you know, fundamentally, we want a lot of time to be devoted to those things because theoretically, they're very, very important topics. My cases don't have as much weight attached to them, but I have significantly more filings, and you still have to process every single case that comes in. So that is me taking the long way around to say that it is not slowing down. I do, like I said, I do a lot of the work myself. That's not to toot my own horn, that's out of necessity, and it's not that I would necessarily give that task up because, like I said, I am a bit of a control freak. But at this stage, I need to be moving on to other types of tasks, namely veterans' court. I'm officially at the point where it's time to start putting in a lot of work towards writing for the grants and searching for the staff and building that program. And I can't continue to work my three court reporters to death. So far, I've had a completely unsuccessful part-time person, two completely unsuccessful part-time people. And then I had a high school student who was one of my current court reporter's daughter who worked through the Twin Rivers program. I would have hired her back and kept her on if she would have stayed, but she was moving on to bigger and better things. But it's, it's just very difficult to find someone who not only has the aptitude for the job, enjoys the job, but also is willing to work for the pay that the county is able to pay them, so part-time is not necessarily cutting it for me.
Basically, we're, we don't have anything in our packet that says exactly how much you're asking for.
So, and I, the short answer is, I don't know, it would be the same amount that was approved for line items. Twelve hundred. Let's see, one thirty-six, ten, twelve hundred, which is for steel, thirteen hundred for Kari, and fifteen hundred for Sims, because it would just be that same exact position. So line item, one thirty-six, ten, three thousand is my part-time currently, and I was approved for twenty-two thousand forty-eight for that part-time position, so I would just be asking for the difference to take it up to that amount. We do already have Microsoft licenses, I've already got the equipment, it, it would just be a matter of, just a matter of salary and health insurance. You know, those benefits, which I know is substantial. I can say that we had twenty-two jury trials set last year. Not all of them came to fruition the way we thought they were going to. Paid out, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen juries last year, so.
And essentially, what you're asking for is just that this part-time person move up to full-time, similar to Superior Court One where they have four full-time people.
That's correct.
And you currently have three, full-time, one, part-time.
That's correct.
So it would just bring you up to the standard.
Yes, and in all candor, I, I mean, the judges, we did get together and discuss budgets. Yes, and in all candor, I, I mean, the judges, we did get together and discuss budgets, and had I known that Judge Lee was going to ask for a full-time position, I would have asked for it at budget time. I did not realize that sh, that was her intention whenever the three of us met, so.
Plus benefits, which is around approximately fourteen thousand.
Right. And basically, what you're looking at, the honor is twenty-two thousand two ninety-eight plus the benefits on top of that.
Was it about thirty-five?
Huh?
What's that come out to, like thirty-five thousand or something?
About thirty-six.
And that was probably with, with benefits, what would that come out to?
About thirty-six.
Thirty-six, five, basically.
I can say that I work very hard to be fiscally responsible with my budget, um, I mean, I, we encumber. They probably hate to see us coming because I, I will go over and I will encumber whatever. I was able to get the handicap accessible bathroom completed this year, staying within what I had asked for last year and this year. Um, and I think I used like a hundred dollars in my own bond money to take care of that. And one thing that I didn't mention, speaking of bond money, is I have had to pay out, uh, comp time because my girls have been way over it, and I know we're not supposed to do that. So, I did not realize that, that, that we were that close, um, I had to pay out a hundred and fifty hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, to one of them and seventy hours to the other. So, the work doesn't stop, it just, and I pa, I'm paying that out of bond, but I would prefer for it to be that they are part of their package.
So, I, I, I'd go ahead and like to make a motion, uh, to go ahead and approve making the part-time position into a full-time position starting immediately and going from the twenty-two thousand and forty-eight salary of a part-time person to forty-four thousand three hundred and forty-six plus, uh, the amount that it's going to require for insurance. So, in order to make sure we, uh, have a motion for enough, I would suggest a motion of thirty-seven thousand additional to that part-time position.
Is there any further questions? Good. Will entertain a motion.
I would be thrilled with that, yeah. Kathy would be very thrilled with that, she is burning the candle at both ends for me right now.
Entertain a motion to, uh, for thirty-seven thousand dollars to approve Judge Gilmore's, uh, part-time to full-time employee.
I would ju, just state for clarity purposes, the additional appropriation, we don't, we'd have to do the ten-day advertising with the official amounts, so this would be more in line with the general agreement, start interviewing, but it couldn't take effect until after next month's meeting when we can approve it, so.
Would I, uh, just as a practical matter, do you guys move the, from the line, the part-time line item up to with the rest of them? Is that how that works? Okay, and then take away the part-time, don't have to worry about that one.
Correct.
Okay. So, then do I need to come back for the next meeting?
That's up to them.
I mean, I can if you have more questions about Superior Court.
So, we'll take, we'll, we'll go ahead and take care of it at that point, once the proper advertising is being conducted.
Okay.
We'll take care of it from that point on.
Okay. Uh, if you ever have questions, I know there's been a lot of change, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm very proud of the progress that we have made, so anytime, don't hesitate, stop by.
Yep, we appreciate what you do.
All right, thank you all.
Once that Veterans Court starts, it's gonna.
It's getting real, it's, I'm starting to get, like, it's making me nervous, but I'm excited because I've got, we've, there's a policy and procedures manual that has to be done, I have to have a, um, participants', what am I trying to say? Participants manual, it's not a manual, but it's like their agreement, um, and so reading through that, and I'm trying to steal from other counties and see what they're doing. I'm supposed to go on Friday to Vigo County and observe their Veterans Court to see, practically speaking, how they implement things. So, it, it will be different from Drug Court, not only in who it serves, but in the type of services that we're gonna provide, so I'm excited. All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Denise.
Who made a motion?
Dan.
Who's second? John Knows. Mr. John and Dan.
Hi. Um, I don't have an agenda, so, um, I don't know which one you want me to start with. I do have two things that I need to talk about this evening, so, do you have two things on your agenda for me? Okay, perfect. So, uh, which one would you like me to start with?
We got the salary.
Uh, pardon me?
We got the salary part of it.
Okay, um, that would be for, um, my salary being that I did address this, uh, last, mm, I'm trying to think about when I wrote that grant. Must have been earlier in the year, um, with, uh, President Chatten. And, um, you know, because I want to talk about that early whenever we're writing the Voka grant, and that happens before the general budget. Um, and so, um, whenever that had, took place, I wanted to talk about it early. Um, and we, uh, had a hard time getting together, but, you know, I brought this to his attention and I sent out an email, uh, presenting what was presented for the grant. Um, because I get a portion of my salary from three different, uh, pockets, one being the Voka grant, one being the state grant, and one being the county budget. Um, and then, um, time got closer, the grant had to be submitted, I ran this through the judge, she said, go ahead, and, um, she approved off on it, so I submitted the grant. Um, and there is a percentage that only Voka will pay on my, um, salary. And so, um, you know, I always stay within that because it's twenty-five percent of the funding. And so, um, I did that. So, with all that being said, um, I, I did not ask for any more money from the county. And I, and my request was that I would keep the amount that I was receiving from the county for two years. Um, so what I was making in twenty twenty-four, I would receive that in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. I asked for no more money. And, um, so I submitted that, and then, um, of course, you know, telling you that in the council meeting. And then I got the budget back, and my salary portion from the county was reduced by five thousand dollars. And so, um, the grant was already executed, and, um, then I have reported on the grant at that current rate. And so, um, now I'm just coming before you to s, ask for the increase, um, or I would need to go back and try to do revisions on the grant. Um, and so, with all that being said, um, in addition, um, we lost the fun, portion of our funding from Voka every year since, um, we've received that Voka grant. And, and since two thousand and nineteen, whenever I first received that grant, we've received over a million dollars from Voka and brought in that funding to Knox County. And it's been great for the children that we've served because without that grant, um, we would have, right now, eighty-six kids on our waitlist because that's the impact that that Voka grant is making on the children that we're serving through, um, ha, having the paid staff advocates. And the only thing that that Voka grant does pay for is our staff salaries and their benefits. Um, they even cut the travel portion out of that, uh, funding. So, um, I have to seek to find funding for the travel, that they travel all over the state of Indiana to serve these children, out of another source. So, I write a grant to United Way or somewhere else to pay for their travel. Um, so with all that being said, um, you know, if you have any questions for me, what I was asking for is to, um, request the additional five thousand back to, uh, my portion of the salary, and I will not ask for additional funding, um, for next year, in twenty twenty-six, from, uh, the county.
Anybody have further questions concerning this? Entertain a motion to elevate this swing's salary by five thousand dollars. We'll make a, entertain a motion to do so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Uh, we'll get with the auditor to amend your salary, your salary ordinance, or shake it down.
Thank you so much, appreciate that.
What? Let's do this over. We're ha, we're having hearing problems tonight. I really am having hearing problems tonight, so. All in favor, who wants to make the motion? Let's do that. Councilman Yocum? Councilman Wrightmeyer?
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Call goes to seven, six, zero. We're good.
Thank you. And the second request I have is a vacant position, um, within the Knox County CASA office for, um, the position from the general fund. Um, it's my volunteer coordinator, and the fund line is, uh, one four three ten eleven zero zero. And, um, I would like to be able to fill that position, um, as soon as possible, if I, if I could say furthermore, um, that position is the one that does the recruiting alongside me of our volunteers and, um, also, um, training our volunteers. So, um, it would be just vital that, uh, we have that position filled so we can work together to recruit and train these volunteers. We do have about, uh, nine people ready to take the next, uh, training class, so it's important that we get somebody in place so we can, um, get those volunteers trained and then on cases because, um, right now, we have about sixty-eight children on our waitlist.
And this is already budgeted, already budgeted.
Yes, yes, um, the salary that is, um, set for that position is forty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Entertain a motion? So. Councilman Wrightmeyer?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Moore. And I do apologize, I really cannot hear. That's my wife, she'll tell you.
Well, thank you so much, and I appreciate your support of Knox County CASA and the children here in Knox County.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, we're gonna take them first, so those are favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those are opposed, same time.
I'm gonna abstain from this vote, so.
Cause they're five zero.
Thank you.
Clerk Shelton? You have your transfers?
Okay, so these, good evening, how are you today? All right, so these transfers are what we've done the last several years, or basically since I became clerk. These is, uh, this is monies that were not spent last year transferring over to my non-reverting election line item. Uh, with this transfer, I have enough money on hand, I believe, to go ahead and pay off our voting machines that we just purchased last fall. Um, you know, continue this process, we're, we're in really good shape when it comes to our level of technology, election-related here in Knox County. Um, and for the next clerk coming up, probably the only expense of it, maybe looking at it, be purchasing new E poll books in a few years, and by that time, we should have money in hand, so no additional appropriation will be required. So, that's the nature of these, uh, transfer requests right here.
Any questions?
I have a question, so when I, when I look at the, uh, the approved budget for this year, uh, you didn't request any money for these voting machines for this year in your budget.
Right, because we have a, a, we have a, like, a two-and-a-half, three-year payment plan with them. I was able to pay, the, the total purchase price of the voting machines last year was one ninety-six. I already paid a hundred thousand with what I had, fifty thousand is due now, fifty thousand the following year. But I believe we already have the, we've already pro, we already processed fifty thousand to microvote for this year, I can't remember. So, it's in the works, so we're relying on this non-reverting line item to take care of it for, without additional appropriation or budgetary requests.
Yeah, but wouldn't it have been easier just to put the money in your budget since you already have the agreement to pay off the machine and then you don't have to?
The, the, in reality, it's six one way, half dozen the other, I just knew that we had this agreement where non-spent monies comes over.
Okay, so there was already an agreement with the previous counsel?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And I wasn't part of that, so.
Yeah, you were, yeah.
That's, that's why I didn't know, I just thought it odd that there's no budgetary money for it, and then we're wanting to, uh, take the money that was left over to move it over to a non-reverting for it, so.
The original intent of the non-reverting line item was when I first became clerk, we knew there was a law coming our way for, uh, acquisition of these VB pads, those big black boxes on our voting machines. And at that time, that was a non-funded, an unfunded mandate from the state. At the time, when I became clerk, that law wasn't going into effect until twenty twenty-eight. However, they expedited that schedule in twenty twenty-two, making them required, uh, for this last election. However, additional funding did come from the state with that, with that passage of the accelerated schedule in twenty-two for twenty twenty-four. That's allowed me to explore other purchases, technology upgrades related elections for, so the money was originally intended for the VB pads, but it's allowing us to upgrade our voting machines, you know. We bought the new voting machines last year because the voting machines were over twenty years old. I, I challenge you to find anywhere else in county government still using twenty-year-old technology. And to be honest with you, the only reason why I went that route because we weren't having any problems with them is this new part support was no longer available for the voting machines we had. Uh, the public are enjoying the new machines, they have some additional features that highlights your selection in green as opposed to being just plain black and white, and, uh.
I'm not questioning.
Oh, I know, I'm just, I'm just trying to give you a little bit of history lesson here.
I'm just asking why we didn't budget for it in this year if we knew that this was, uh, a need to pay this off?
It was discussed during our budget hearings with, with the former counsel, is how we're gonna do it.
And what is left on the amount that we're needing to pay off on these machines?
Well, I'll have to get with the auditors off, so I'm in a transition period between my, uh, old bookkeeper, no big, new bookkeeper. Uh, we have ninety-six thousand to pay, I'm thinking we paid fifty, but I can't remember, I'll, I'll get with Lisa tomorrow and.
Because you're wanting to encumber about seventy-seven thousand and some change.
Right.
So, then all of that money would be, that is encumbered, would go to pay off the machines, and we'd be left twenty-some thousand next year, is that correct?
Right, that, that's.
So, then we could look for that to be addressed in next year's budget?
We, we can discuss that, usually what we've been doing is just being, uh, like, a non-reverting election purchase item to prevent the need for asking for a large additional appropriations, but.
Well, you wouldn't have to ask for an additional appropriation if you include it in your budget, and we can get it approved through the budget time.
Well, at the budget times, you know, which happened around September, I, at that time, I have no firm number of how much is gonna be left, especially during an election year.
We all go through it, for sure.
Yeah, so. But we can discuss that, yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Certainly, okay.
Okay, um, there's several transfers here, so should we, you know, just do them all at once?
Make a motion, group them together, nine, two, eleven.
Right. I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Six zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Prior minutes.
We never do prior minutes.
Nope, prior minutes coming up. Everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Pick a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilman Wrightmeyer, seconded by Councilman Yocum, all in favor?
Aye.
Six zero. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes this meeting. And we will resume on eleventh March, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to, uh,
One thing, I'd like to mention that my wife and I attended Dine with the Doc a week or so ago. As Dr. Bassett was speaking on heart and heart health and cardiologist, very informative. I have it every month. It's very interesting. It's a lot of old people, so we fit right in. Generations, radio box lunch, it's free. It's, it's very informative. Like next month, Dr. Stein is speaking. It's all good.
Anybody else have anything to add?
Yeah, I think, I'll bring it up. Uh, Matt Holden and Vicki from the Highway Department, David and me, went last week to the AIC legislative session. And, uh, I think we all found it very interesting. There was a lot of meetings and stuff and, and, uh, a lot of talk about property taxes and, you know, but there's, there was no decisions made, nothing was carved in stone. Uh, to me, it was all over the place. I mean, every, every speaker was a different attitude. And, uh, so as far as the property taxes go, uh, this, does you any good back there? But it's all over the board. So I, I don't think it's, they don't know what they're gonna do yet. You guys agree with that? There was a lot of talk. There's a lot of talk. There's, but it was. Yeah. I just wanna bring that up.
Yes, that's gonna be quite impactful. If it does pass and how it passes, it's gonna be interesting for all of us involved. So, um, basically we'll tighten some belts up until then and we'll move on after we find out what's going on. Cause if it does happen, we wanna be prepared and make sure everybody's taken care of. So, Jay, you anything?
Nope.
Jay didn't have anything. Just passing that on.
He's looking over the financial impact of the, uh,
I'm upset about one.
Oh, it's gonna be a bomb. You can look at that under your phone.
It, it all depends. Yep. Any further questions? March eleventh, five ten. We'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Meeting is closed.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
What was, uh, trigger my. Wait now, I'm sorry, I'm the new kind of, I was just like.
Hundred percent, I can't question.
Okay.